You ready Laura? Alright, the December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two session of the Anaronda County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please rise as we open up with prayer. Let us bow our heads. Dear Lord, we confess our dependency on you. Thank you for extending abundance, mercy, and protection to our country and our county. Every resource, freedom, and opportunity we have is a gift from you. We ask that you open our minds with wisdom and compassion so all people may be treated fairly with dignity. Open our ears to cries of desperate, of the desperate and powerless so cycles of poverty, disease, and abuse may be broken. Open our eyes to see how best to respond and open our hearts with courage to do the right thing even when pressured to do otherwise. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, we have a special presentation and Councilwoman Amanda Fiedler will take it from here.
So I'm, I'm very excited to be able to share a little bit of District Five and some exciting entertainment and talent that has taken place at the national level in the last few months. Music makes the world go round. I say that quite often. It brings us together when other things do not. Other things can divide us, but music crosses all generations, ethnicities, all age groups. So I had the awesome experience of being part of Team Perigita. So Perigita is a senior at Severna Park High School who is with us this evening. So Perigita, if you wouldn't mind coming up here. So Perigita made it to the semifinals on MBC's The Voice, but she's absolutely a winner. And I know that door closed, but I have no doubt that at least a half a dozen more are going to open. So when I say that music makes the world go round and we all have that in common, Sullivan's Cove is a restaurant in District Five. They're reviewing parties every week. And you would hear the hustle and bustle of a restaurant, but when Perigita would get on to sing, you could hear a pin drop in the audience or in the restaurant. There were people in the restaurant that would say, "Oh my gosh, she just gave me goosebumps." I'd go to the grocery store and I'd hear Perigita's name in, in line. I'd hear, "Did you hear her sing last week?" And I did have a family member, and when I say my whole family was in, and I'm sure there are other council members who were also in on Team Perigita. I was sitting on this dais at our last meeting and I got a text from my mom that said, "Perigita's coming to sing after the next commercial break." And I said, "I'm in a council meeting." Her response was, "Can't you call a recess?" So we could not, we had to move on with business, but I went home and I voted my ten times. A lot of Anaronda County voted their ten times. We are so proud of you. Your family is so proud of you. And I know that the citizens of Anaronda County are going to cheer you on in whatever you have in store for you. So this is a citation from the entire county council, and I'm going to go ahead and read it here. This citation is presented to Perigita Pastola, "Whereas music in its simplest definition is the art of producing a pleasing sound. And whereas Perigita Pastola transcends the simplest definition and uplifts and inspires others with her music. And whereas Ms. Pastola is a phenomenal artist who will no doubt continue to bring joy to the world with her voice and who will always have fans in Anaronda County. Now therefore, the county council hereby honors and recognizes Perigita Pastola, one of music's finest talents, for her incredible achievements and wishes her continued success in her future endeavors."
Thank you.
I don't know why all of our council meetings can't start like this. I'm like so happy right now. Yes, I wanted to bring up at this time, the administration. I think you all had something. Say it again? Oh, there she is. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
It's a very hard act to follow. The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at four ten two 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 four four one three.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Swain?
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of the Council, good evening. I think I've met all of you. My name is Greg Swain. I'm the county attorney. And I'm here tonight just to tell you a little bit about our office and how we operate. I've been the county attorney since two thousand eighteen, was appointed by County Executive Pittman. Prior to being appointed, I was a senior staff member of the Office of Law. And I came to the county in two thousand eleven. And prior to that, I was in private practice for about twenty years. So the county attorney's office and the Office of Law is one of our charter agencies. The duties of the county attorney are set forth in the charter. It's Section five twenty-six of the charter. And there are duties that are personal to the county attorney, and there are duties that are performed by the Office of Law. So some of the things that we do, and the main thing we do is we are the legal advisor to all county agencies. And that means we are the attorney for the county council, as well as the attorney for the county executive and the county executive's office. We assist the council with drafting legislation. When, when there are council meetings such as this one, you'll always see a member of my staff here as, as the legal rep for all the bills before the council. We do a lot of miscellaneous things. We review every contract that the county enters into, which is about thirty-five hundred contracts a year. We review all the ordinances passed by the county council for legal sufficiency. And then we provide a legal defense to county agencies in the event that we get into litigation. So our Office of Law, first of all, we're located at the Heritage Complex, which is over on Reva Road. We're in building twenty-six sixty, which is, and on the fourth floor. So we have thirty-six staff members, twenty-two attorneys, five paralegals, six legal secretaries, two administrative assistants, and an office manager. So thirty-six staff in all. And I think we have an excellent staff. We really do. We have experienced attorneys and they do a great job. The, the way the office is set up is I am the department head. There are two deputy county attorneys below me, and that is Hamilton Tyler, who is our Deputy County Attorney for Administration. And then Lori Blair Klosmeyer, who is our Deputy County Attorney for Legislation. The office is generally divided into three sections. We have a litigation team. We have a, a human services team, and then we have a government operations team. So the government operations team are usually the attorneys that you folks will be dealing with. So our litigation team is led by Phil Culpepper. He is the supervising county attorney for litigation. There are eight attorneys, and they handle all the civil litigation that the county is involved in. And that includes personal injury type cases when the county employee does something in the course of their employment and someone is injured. Contract claims. We defend workers' compensation claims, which are claims bought by employees or hurt with a work-related injury. Any action necessary to collect money that's due to the county is handled by our litigation team. We defend the county and personnel claims and personnel matters. We, the litigation team also provides advice on the Maryland Public Information Act and requests that are received, both by council as well as other agencies. And, and the litigation team also provides general legal advice on, on those types of matters, liability type issues. The, the Human Relations Team is three attorneys. It's supervised by Supervising County Attorney Kevin Outing. And our Human Services Team represents the Department of Social Services. So they are very busy, in court a lot. They litigate things such as children in need of assistance claims, adult guardianships, termination of parental rights. And then lastly, we have our Government Operations Team. The Government Operations Team is supervised by Kelly Kenny, who is the Supervising County Attorney. And what the Government Operations Team does is first they do code enforcement, which means any violation of our zoning code, building code, health code, critical area laws. We bring civil actions to enforce those code provisions. They provide regular legal advice mostly to our land use departments, such as the Office of Planning and Zoning, Department of Inspections and Permits, and the Department of Public Works. And that is on a daily basis, in constant contact with those agencies. The Government Ops Team also drafts the legislation for the administration, and often at the request of council, we draft legislation for the county council as well. I say us because I was from the Government Operations Team, so I lapse into that sometimes. We, as I mentioned, we also do contract review. So all types of contracts, anything that involves the interest of the county, including our procurement and our purchasing contracts, the Government Ops Team reviews those for form and legal sufficiency. As I said, it's about thirty-five hundred contracts go through our office every year. We also represent county agencies before the Board of Appeals. That's principally the Office of Planning and Zoning, Department of Inspections and Permits, and also the Office of Personnel. That includes any appeals from the Board of Appeals to Circuit Court and the other appellate courts. So usually the attorney who handles the Board of Appeals case takes that case all the way through in the event that there's an appeal. The Government Ops Team also provides advice on compliance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. So that, those are our three divisions. Now, the county charter also allows us to hire outside counsel if it's an area or a matter that involves special expertise. So for instance, we have attorneys who work with us on bond issuances. We have attorneys that work with us on union negotiations, real estate settlements, and tax counsel as well. So in those instances, we'll hire an outside firm to provide us with legal advice as well. The Office of Law has also recommended, and the county has brought a couple of affirmative actions on our behalf. You all have probably seen the opioid cases that have been throughout the country in the past six or seven years. We hire outside counsel for those cases, and they're all contingency fee cases, which means it doesn't cost the county anything. They simply get paid from whatever the settlement might, or judgment might be. So currently, we have the opioid case, which has already settled. And we just got the first, it's an eighteen-year payout. We just got the first payment for that. The, if you're familiar with the Juul e-smoking devices, we also have a claim against that manufacturer, and that case is very close to settling. It's not nearly the magnitude of the opioid cases, but that is close to settling, and we expect it will settle within the next month. And then the last affirmative litigation we have is our climate change case, which is still in, kind of bouncing back between state and federal court as that sort of works its way through the system. So the county attorney by charter is the attorney for the county. Now, there's three exceptions to that. One is the county council has legislative council, Matt Bennett. So he is authorized by charter. The Board of Appeals has its own attorney to provide them with legal advice because the Office of Law is representing the agency before the board. And then lastly, the Personnel Board also has an attorney who represents them. So one of the things that the Office of Law is always very aware of is that we provide representation both to the administration as well as the legislative branch. So we take great pains to maintain confidentiality with those relationships. So if we are requested by a council member to draft legislation or to give an opinion on legislation, that is kept confidential from the administration and the executive branch, and vice versa. Sometimes it comes, we'll get the same question from the council as we get from the administration requesting an opinion. They'll get the same opinion, but they'll get it separately, and they won't know that the other side has even asked the question. So we do take great pains to try to maintain that confidentiality throughout. So each member of the council has the right to seek the legal advice at the county attorney's office. Once we provide that advice to you, it's up to you to decide what to do with it. So who do you contact if you have a legal question? So you can always contact me. My email address, it's my name, Gregory.Swain@AACounty.org. Laura Corby has my other contact information, including my cellphone, so you can email, you can text, you can call. With specific questions, with legislative questions, you're best served by directing those questions to Deputy County Attorney Lori Blair Klosmeyer. Lori is not here tonight, but you will see her a lot because she comes to virtually every meeting. The, another person who you'll get very familiar with is Supervising County Attorney Kelly Kenny. She works a lot on legislation as well. So those two are always available for consultation or questions. If you have questions about any of our litigation cases, Hamilton Tyler, who is our other Deputy County Attorney, would be the person to direct those questions to. So that pretty much concludes my remarks. Looking forward to the next four years. It's great to see your familiar faces and welcome to our new faces. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We definitely appreciate the advice. I know in, in my previous life, when I, when I served in this capacity, I've, I've known you for a number of years, and you've always been sort of a straight shooter with me, so appreciate that firewall that exists between this floor and the fourth floor, because I think that's important when it comes to trust. And so we have every, every right to have that, that firewall in place. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members?
Thank you. We will now transition to the portion of the Board of Appeals. There were, as, as many of you know, we interviewed applicants for the Anaronda County Board of Appeals. And you may recall that the Board of Appeals application was held open through this past Friday. And so we now have interview, a, a few of these applicants that are here today. They're going to be answering some questions and sort of speaking about themselves as well. And so the County Board of Appeals is established pursuant to section six oh one of the county charter. And again, it is, it is comprised of seven qualified members and voters appointed by a resolution of the county council. I said this a couple of weeks ago, and I'll say it today. It literally is the second most important decision we make as, as council members, at least in my mind. And so they have a significant impact in how decisions are made when it comes to land use in most cases, as well as other issues that impact a citizen or voter. And so what I would like to do is call up two of those individuals that have requested to, have applied for one of these seven positions. And so Mr. Rober, Donna, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rober, Donna Rober and James Estep. Go ahead and come forward, please. And Donna, you were first up on the list, and so if you can, I guess introduce yourself and then tell us a little bit about yourself.
Honorable county council members, staff, and, and guests. Good evening, and thank you very much for giving me this chance to interview for a seat on the, on the Board of Appeals. My name is Donna Rober. I live in Crownsville, formerly District Four, now District Six. So I'm a firm believer in public service. I have served at the federal level for over forty years. And I have been searching for an opportunity to be of service to the community. This, this position really appealed to me because it's really a non-political position. It involves many different situations and would involve teamwork, critical thinking, and decision-making, all part of my past. It is an opportunity to serve in an area where I believe I could both learn and contribute. While I do not have direct experience with the kinds of issues that this, this board would, of issues that would come before this board, I do believe I have applicable experience. As a member of the US Army, and then as a federal employee, I have served on numerous advisory, disciplinary, adjudication, awards, promotions, and planning boards. Each of these required reading and understanding rules, regulations, laws, and policies, and then applying them to the issue at hand. Teaming was essential to share thoughts, opinions, and interpretations, and then to come to agreement on a resolution. My years of work and experience as an intelligence professional could also be useful. Just, just for an example, I have often been called upon to find solutions to critical problems while remaining within both legal and financial constraints. Learning what was acceptable and normal, identifying the unusual or abnormal, and making informed decisions was a part of my everyday life. As I stated in my letter, my husband Ed and I bought our first home in Anaronda County in nineteen seventy-six. We then were stationed overseas, sold that house, and moved back into our current home in nineteen eighty-two upon our return from an overseas assignment. Our two sons were born while we lived here. They attended and graduated from Anaronda County Public Schools, and they have bought homes actually in District Six and are raising their families in the county. It is home to three generations of my family, and therefore it's very, very important to me to watch this county grow and progress. I have watched the changes and growth. I know that it has not come without challenges. As we move into the future, I would like to be a part of the team that adjudicates those challenges that cannot otherwise be resolved. I would very much like to be a part of a growing county that is fair and equitable, offers affordable housing, recreation, and safety for all. And I'm going to close now and not take five minutes of your time, but I'd like to thank you for the time you've given me. And I now welcome questions.
Ms. Rober, the last group, when they came up to testify, we asked them a question specifically about time commitment as well as the back, there's obviously a caseload, a backlog of caseloads that's pending sort of the panel's review. Are you, do you foresee any issues with the time commitment that'll be necessary to one, either, either carry out the current duties as well as maybe even sort of increase the amount of times that you're meeting to, to remove that backlog?
So unfortunately, I do have some vacation time scheduled coming up. But other than that, I have all the time that I could possibly need as a, as a retiree and a grandmother who's on call to drive as, as necessary. Other than that, I'm, I'm available.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. The next person we're going to speak to is Mr. James Estep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Forgive me, I'm, I've been on the road to recovery for a bit, and my voice is not where I would like it to be. So rather than speak for several minutes and almost hear myself, I will try and give you the elevator version. I've been a resident of Anaronda County since two thousand and five, a resident of the state for all but six years of my fifty-six. I am a proud Marylander and a proud Anaronda County resident. I have spent time inside and outside of government and gotten to know its ways and winding paths for the past several years. So I feel I can bring a vital voice to, to the Board of Appeals and a good deal of experience dealing with the unusual and circumstances which might arise. Again, sorry, I just don't have much going vocally today. I have five children, four of whom who have already been a part of the Anaronda County Public School system, and a fifth who is only two but will certainly be on her way. Proud resident of Odenton, formerly District Four, and still currently District Four. So I thank my councilwoman, the Honorable Julie Umer, for, for asking me to attend. So I think that's best if I stop now. Thank you.
Did you say you had a, she was two?
I have a two-year-old.
Okay, okay. Bless your heart.
And, and a twenty-four-year-old, so.
And the same to you. So you're okay with the tempo that potentially could come with being and serving in this capacity?
I would be honored to serve, and I will certainly make myself available whenever necessary to, to achieve what the, what the board needs.
Appreciate it. Any questions from the other council member? Alright, well, thank you all for coming up here and expressing your willingness to serve in this capacity. May be seated. We now have concluded the deliberations for the Board of Appeal candidates. We will go through, get through more business, take a brief recess to make decisions, and we will vote on a resolution appointing the Board of Appeals later this evening. We will now open up our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any submissions through the online testimony tool for this portion of the meeting?
No, no, Mr. Chairman. There was nothing received through the online testimony tool this time.
Alright, so we'll invite members from the audience who are here to speak, who have signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. So is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Come forward. And after you finish that, if you could just state your name and address for the record. Yes? Please be seated. I'm going to let him sit here. And then Ms. Joanna Golden, if you want to come forward. Ms. Joanna, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joanie Golden. My address is three 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 Shetland Lane, Glenburnie, Maryland, two ten sixty-one. Good evening, county council members. My name is Joanie Golden. I'm a Title I math teacher and a parent in the O'Mill Cluster. I come tonight during the busy holiday season to give a supportive voice to a portion of Dr. Bedell's proposed budget for next year for the expansion of the triple E program in the O'Mill Cluster. For years now, our cluster has been projected for triple E, and last year we were so close. With county council members agreeing to its value, however, we are still waiting. Other students in the county have participated in this learning opportunity for about six years, and experience exposure to learning that constitutes in your area will never be able to get back. Our high-poverty schools typically equate to fewer background and community opportunities, and continuing to deny our students of this program only enhances that deficit. It's not equitable, and it's a disservice to our students and our teachers, who, also I might add, are missing out on planning time that other elementary teachers are receiving because of triple E. Our kindergarten readiness assessment data show that kindergartners are not coming to school ready to learn, and we need the triple E program to continue to fill learning gaps. In schools today, there is a push for career technology education, CTE, and this is, cannot all be done in an academic content area as we need real-world exposure in language at all levels in order to meet the needs of the whole child. And just think about it, my school is a Title I school. We have a large number of students that are a year or more behind in the grade level standards. This past spring, I was able to join what other awardees This past spring, I was able to join what other awardees of the Presidential Award for Science and Math Teaching in Washington, D.C. The national team, as well as the other awardees at this event, were surprised that our county and our state did not offer this program for all students. My personal challenge is to find innovative ways to spread the awareness of the Triple E program to families in the Olmwood Cluster, as well as gather their supportive voices in order to receive what our children need. My challenge for you is to join us at Glenbernie Park for a night of STEM on January nineteenth and to engage with our families. Please do not continue to pass on our future scientists, linguists, and activists. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a flyer if you guys want it. I can leave it here.
Thank you.
Multiple copies. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir, come back to the table. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Francesco Restino. I live at 1505 Stacy Lane, Annapolis, Maryland 21409. You just call me Frank. And I am in District Five. If you don't know where Stacy Lane is, District Five. Just as a side note, she's being kind when she says students are a year or more behind. I work full-time up at Cat North, and we get students that are like three and four years behind. But that... I support what she's trying to do. But anyway, I came here because when I went to vote, I read a description of a referendum on extending the terms of the county council. And the way it was written was to limit the county council to no more than three terms. Well, twenty years ago, I was living in Anarundale County. Twenty years before that, I was living in Anarundale County. So I'm born and raised here, and I remember why Anarundale County did the first referendum limiting it to two terms in 1992. I guess if I have any complaint, it's the way it was written. It would have been more honest and genuine if it had just said, hey, we want Anarundale County to vote for the county council to get one more term. So for, you know, total term of twelve years, not the way it was written. And I know that's how referendums are written. I know that's how people write laws when they're sponsoring them to try to get them passed. It's very... What's the word? You have to be a verbal gymnast to understand exactly what the law is trying to get to. And I just don't think that's right. I think we should be a little bit more plain English.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Any item... Any councilmember would like to place on the agenda? All right. Can I get a motion to take five-minute recess to finalize the Board of Appeals' resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Picker.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The county council is now... Sorry, we will now take a five-minute recess to go and discuss a resolution. Thank you. Session, all electronic devices should remain silent. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Allison Picker, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 5th, 2022.
The meeting was called to order at 4:00 P.M. by Ms. Radveen, Chair. The meeting was held in the county council chambers around the center, Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 5th, 2022?
Allison Picker, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, the motion carries. The minutes of December 5th, 2022 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8922, An Ordnance Concerning Capital Budget and Program, Board of Education's Security-Related Upgrades, Maintenance Backlog, Roof Replacement, and Upgrade Various Schools' Capital Projects Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 9022, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart. Bill Number 9122, An Ordnance Concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District, Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 9222, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Critical Area Overlay, RCA Uses, Nurseries with Landscaping and Plant Sales. Bill Number 9322, An Ordnance Concerning Board of Appeals Notice of Zoning Appeals, Property Address.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening. Resolution Number 5022 will be voted on this evening as well.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will read the title of Resolution Number 5022. Resolution Number 5022, Resolution Appointing the Members of the County Board of Appeals.
So we've, over the last couple of weeks, certainly each of us have taken a painstaking sort of review of folks that we think should be appointed to this. And before I read out the seven names that we have chosen to appoint, is there any councilmember that would like to say anything about this resolution?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone who applied. I think I... My fellow councilmen will all echo that we were very impressed with all the applicants, and it was great to have so many to choose from. And I know that they will do a good job, and everyone who is not appointed, we will be calling on you to do other things because we appreciate your willingness to serve and all the expertise that you bring. So thank you all.
Thank you. So be it resolved that the county council of Anarundale County, Maryland, that it hereby appoints the following persons to the County Board of Appeals with terms beginning December 20th, December 20th of 2022. For District One, LaDeh Akinbelaji. For District Two, Mr. Tony Labortina. For District Three, Darren or Mike Jacobs. For District Four, Mr. James Estep. For District Five, Mr. John Fury. For District Six, Mr. William Dax. And for District Seven, Mr. Phil Bisson. Is there any other business to be brought before this county council at this time?
Are we going to vote on that resolution?
All right, so we're going to discuss the work sessions, correct?
Oh, Mr. Yeah.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Can I have a motion to vote to approve Resolution 5022?
Mr. Chair, how about if... May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
How about if you allow me to read the title of the resolution one more time?
Check.
And then ask me to call the roll, and I'll call the roll.
Got it.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution Number 5022, Resolution Appointing the Members of the County Board of Appeals. You ready for me to call the roll?
Yes, please call the roll.
Ms. Picker?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5022 has been adopted.
All right, this time, is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Work session, okay.
Did you want to talk about the work session?
I did want to talk about the work session.
Let's talk about the work session, Mr. Chair.
So for those that aren't aware, the county council has two specific meetings that they have to sit in each month. That's the first and third Monday of each month where we vote on legislation. But there's also an opportunity for us, the second Tuesday of each month, where we actually sit down and we discuss legislations. We bring in experts who are proficient at whatever legislation or area of expertise that we're looking for, and they discuss with us some of the pros and cons when it comes to legislation. Part of this discussion is to determine whether or not we are going to continue to hold those meetings or what frequency we're going to hold those meetings for the second Tuesday of the month. It's not something that... It's something that the public can attend. In the past, we've done virtual sessions as well over this previous term due to COVID. And so at some point, we'll probably come up with some mix between in-person or virtual or whatever this body decides. So is there any sort of input when it comes to the work sessions from any of the councilmembers?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Picker.
Thank you. I certainly value work sessions. I'm comfortable with the second Tuesday of the month. I'm also open to either in-person or virtual. Virtual can be beneficial for not only the council who work during the day, and it's... But it's also convenient for the administration to bring folks onto a Zoom. But I'm happy to be... I can make myself available in-person as well. So I'm open. I do think they definitely need to happen. I don't know how other people feel about it, though. That's my two cents.
And for the members that were on here previous during the COVID session, was there any sort of issues with the virtual when you guys were discussing or gals were discussing legislation or bills or anything like that? Pretty fluid as far as technical issues that would come up?
Well, there's always technical issues when anybody's on a Zoom. You know, whether you've upgraded recently or... No, there can be issues depending on where you are and your Wi-Fi connection. But like I said, I'm open to in-person. It works with my schedule, but I can't speak for the six of my colleagues about virtual. I'm open to keeping it fluid, too. Like, January, we could have snow, and we could still hold our work session if we had planned for it to be over Zoom versus in-person. We don't have to get out onto icy roads. Just one of mine, just a thought.
Mr. Volkey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So used to Madam Chair. So I would say I think work sessions are extremely valuable. I think that we have found... So I would say I think work sessions are extremely valuable. I think that we have found them to be extremely valuable. I think that the second Tuesday of the month in the morning is something that many of us have already built into our schedules. So for me, that works perfectly. I like that. My preference is strongly that we do them in person. I just find it to be more productive to have everybody together. While we have done them virtually, and I give kudos to the county staff who have worked wonders to try to make that happen for us, I do just enjoy being in person. I like all of you. I like to see you.
Ms. Hummer?
No, I'm open for either one. I like the flexibility that working around weather or changes in COVID status or something that we have virtual. But I'm with Mr. Volkey. I always prefer in-person when we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes to keeping the work sessions. They are invaluable. Tuesday works well, and I, as Mr. Volkey said, already built into the schedule. I think in-person with the option to do virtual if there's inclement weather, but in-person being the number one for me.
This may be a question for Madam Secretary. In terms of public notice, if we wanted to, you know, if we did have inclement weather, how far in advance would we need to provide notice of a shift from in-person to virtual, for example?
So I will tell you the terminology that we use, and then it will certainly go to the attorneys for any further interpretation. It's reasonable notice. And we have been advised in the past that we can accomplish that by getting a notice on the website as soon as possible. And again, I will just point out there's no public participation in work sessions. It's between you and the administration. And so perhaps, you know, there's less of a harm done if we can't get that notice on the website as soon as we might like to.
Thank you. I certainly have a preference for in-person, but I have to admit sometimes having them virtually did make it easier for me to attend due to just scheduling conflicts. So I'm, I guess I'll say I'm fine either way.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Volkey and Ms. Fiedler. I do prefer in-person. I think there's a certain chemistry, and you're able to build. When we're able to meet in person, the more opportunities we have to do that, the better. That being said, the ability to pivot, knowing that we can do so, to be virtual in the event of inclement weather, I would certainly, that's preferable than people being out on the roads and, you know, risking their personal safety to have a meeting. So in-person, virtual when necessary would be my preference.
Mr. Barron?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
I do.
Good to see you. Just because the work sessions do involve the administration, I just wanted to pop up and give our preference. Administration strongly supports the work session. Obviously, it is the council's prerogative. What we do ask, that they're consistent on the same day, and some regular notice for our folks. We always try to get all the department heads or relevant experts in a department on particular pieces of legislation. So it can be a little difficult to schedule if they were to bounce around. So I think we're, we like the Tuesday. It's always easier for me to get more people virtually than it is in-person, but understand that the choice is the council's prerogative. So I just wanted to get that on the record, that we strongly support work sessions.
Okay. And if I may, which months are we not, so August is one of those months and May?
The month of May, yes, because you're usually doing budget meetings. And then the month of August, we do not schedule work sessions because that's a recess unless the council decides differently ahead of time.
Would the council be open to, and I think District, as far as the inclement weather, I think that's valuable added. I'm certainly enjoy the flexibility between in-person and virtual. But since we already have the May and August, would December be a good month just because it's the holiday season? A lot of things are going on. Would the council be okay with that being a virtual in advance, a virtual meeting? But every, the Tuesday, second Tuesday of every month, same time, same location? But December being potentially one of those months where we do virtual?
December or January?
I'm actually, I could do either or both.
We're past the second Tuesday as all.
Correct, for future, I'm talking about for future.
You're saying all December is going forward.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest that we cross that bridge when we're a little closer to it?
Okay.
For December, but maybe, I don't know if folks have a thought on January.
Any thoughts on January? In person? All right, sounds like it. In person, it is. So as it stands, we will continue to meet the second Tuesday of every month here in the council chambers. And May and August, we will not meet. And depending on inclement weather, we will potentially transition to virtual, and we'll ensure that the public has adequate notice of that transition. Mr. Barron?
Just one more point of clarification. What time, sir?
So we usually, it's at 9:00 AM? So 9:00 AM. It's 10:00 AM. 9:00 AM it is. All right. Before we end, because I was getting ready to make this other comment, I do want to say it has been a pleasure in the year 2022 to serve with the seven of you all. And so this is our last council meeting before Christmas, and so I just want to say happy holidays and I, and Merry Christmas to all of you. And I hope that 2023 brings much joy to Anaronal County. And if you all want to say anything, you know, please, it was just the last council meeting for this term. All right. All right, may I have a motion?
I just wanted to wish anyone celebrating Hanukkah, Happy Hanukkah. And of course, Merry Christmas, and to all a good night.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The county council is adjourned until January 3, 2022. Happy holidays and happy new years.